Witnessing a lot of incidents out there. My only concern is in the process of this, I hope that there's some kind of a contingency that if Silver Lion Farms, for whatever reason, pulled out, that our devotion to a station out there, the individuals and the equipment, that we still have access to it as a county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for the fire district? George, you got any?
No, sir.
Okay. We're hearing that and seeing that, or we're going to close the fire commission meeting and reopen the county commission meeting? We have a 10 o'clock, so we're gonna have to skip. We have a 10, 10:15, 10:30. Item 3, item 4. Okay, we'll go to item 4 on page 4. It's item 1, and the first item on there is undermining, and it's a discussion for possible action, approval of county commission meeting schedule for November and December 2020. We met the other day, and because Veterans Day this year falls on Wednesday, which is a holiday, we can't have a meeting that day, obviously. Nicole was, we have to canvass the votes for the general election on, before the November 16th, so I, between myself and Travis, we talked about it and figured that the best day to have a meeting would be December 6th, excuse me, November 16th, which is a Monday. We can canvas the votes and have our regular scheduled meeting the same day for November. So that's the plan for November. The meeting for December is just gonna go right along with our regular scheduled second to, second Wednesday of the month in December. And because it's so close to Christmas, we forego the second meeting as is normal. This is normal every single year. And so, that being said, on the commission meeting, we'll address the next item as we get to it. So, I look for, does anybody on the commission have a problem, or anybody in office have a problem with what we just discussed, November 16th? And then stay on the regular track for the first meeting in December?
It's not just November 16th and December 9th, and those are the only two.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So those would be the, thank you. Those would be the two dates. Does anybody have a problem or question with that? If there's a, if there's something that comes up, like sometimes it does, we can always have a special meeting in December, but we'll go with those dates for now. If there's no, if there's no problem with it, I'll look for a motion to approve those dates.
So move to have scheduled county commission meeting November 16th and December 9th.
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Sent by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? Item B. Is discussion for possible action, the approval to set a special county commission meeting in January 2021. On your item, it says 2020, but it's 2021, should type all. For the swearing in of newly elected commissioners. Looking at the calendar, the 1st of January is Friday, 2nd is Saturday, Sunday, so Monday, we have to have this done as quick as possible. So Monday morning, January the 4th, would be the swearing in of the new, of the new or existing county commission, or whatever that is. And then immediately following, we will also, I guess that's not what I'm swearing in. I thought we'd just do our assignments at the same time, but that's not on the agenda, so we'll have to discuss that at another meeting, at that meeting. But the idea is to get the elected officials sworn in, and to do the chairman, vice chairman, and all of our assignments at the same meeting. Okay? Can I get Mike that?
Yeah, we're just starting the meeting today. You guys can go ahead.
Yeah, we get the agenda, what we're doing.
That's more, yeah.
So that would be, it would be January the 4th, 2021, for our special meeting to swear in the new elected officials. Problem, do we got a problem with that? I'll look for a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve?
Sir?
Motion by Lori, and the second by Ian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? Item C, and I haven't got quite the update on this. It's a matter, approval of a letter of support regarding the N4 water use. N4 had a meeting yesterday, and at that meeting, they were going to ask the county commissioners from Lincoln and White Pine County to support the letter that they have in regards to the issuance of water permits. I haven't quite seen it. Kyle was supposed to give us some letters, but should we act on this today or wait?
No, we don't know anything about it.
We don't know anything about it, so that-
He does have a draft done. He has a draft, and I failed to hand it out this morning. If we take a break, I can get it, and we can handle this a little later, if that's fine.
Sounds good to me, yeah. So let's do that, then. We'll have a letter from Kyle. All right, let's just go to item D. Item D is the approval of comments in regards to the Ely Ranger District's proposed fee increases for the campgrounds. In the backup, as you've read, Jose sent us that. They haven't raised the fees in many years, and they're looking to set a fee structure for usage of county campgrounds, and-
Forest service campground.
Forest service. So what this is, is just, any comments regarding their, anybody got a comment on the raise for the campgrounds? Anybody?
Yeah, I'm an RB guy, and I've been doing it for years, and these, with the changes, they're still extremely, extremely reasonable. And for the work that's been done up there, I think it's justified.
Anyone else got a comment? Because that's what this is. This is just a comment in regards to their proposed fees. We haven't seen them yet, but this is just to accept comments on the raise. I'm with Shane. Things go up 20 years and no raises, and at a reasonable rate like that, whatever they decide to set, as long as it's not outrageous, I think that we shouldn't have any objection to the forest servicing, increasing their fees if they need to.
Right. I just wanted to comment, I don't know if you guys noticed it, but in the Ward Mountain campground, where the single sites, they're the highest, it's 12, only $12, and I do say only $12, but part of that is to help cover, they put in the new well up there, the mine help with that, but the maintenance and taking care of it is, will be the forest services, forest, the forest services obligation, and that well is down 1,600 feet, and so he's hoping it lasts a long time, and that they can have more funds to, just in case it goes out.
Anyone else got a comment? And that's what this is, just, does everybody agree with what's been said by Shane, Lori, myself, and everybody else? So I think that's what this is. Is that right, Mike? Can I look at this?
Do we have some, in the back of it, they show the new rates?
Yes.
Do we have some comments already drafted?
Aye.
No. Nothing I know of.
So we, what you want to do is approve some sort of statement of support, and then it'll be drafted, and you guys can decide whether to-
Okay, so I'll look for a motion to approve the letter, or whatever, that we all, that we all support the increase.
It'll just be one paragraph, pretty much.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve, letting Jose know by written letter.
Okay.
Our support.
Perfect. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Who's second?
Oh, I thought he did, okay. Motion by Lori, and the second by Ian. Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? Okay. Now, we are going to stay on the same page forward. And item 2 is Travis, go down, vice chairman, discussion for possible action, the ratification to extend termination of space utilization for the University of Nevada Cooperative Extension in the county library until November 30th, to allow more time to find a suitable and affordable private lease for services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. They reached out to me, and about the extension, so I reached out to Mike, and he thought under the circumstance that was fine, so they're still in there, obviously. So this is just ratification for the 10th, 30th.
Okay.
Dave, that said, I think that since they've already asked for that, we should go ahead and approve it, but I had a phone call from Dr. Lyles yesterday, and he's planning on being on the agenda for the 28th. So maybe things will move forward, and what they want to do so far is be sure that they have something available for, still for the 4H.
Yeah, I think that's very, very important, the 4H program, and we gave it November 30th, but because of some of the transitions that have taken place here in the last couple of weeks, and the availability of space, and a lot of rentals being difficult to find, I think extending this to the 30th is the right thing, and we can listen to them on the 28th, and we can go from there, and leave the door open for maybe possible further extensions, or, but what's, we certainly want to keep 4H and cooperative extension here somewhere. We don't want to just slam the door, but I think extending it to the 30th is-
Well, you know, what the public needs to understand is that this board does support the 4H program, does support the cooperative extension. We've given them free space for years, for years, so that they can serve our community, and that's all well and good, and of course, they can make their pitch and petition the commission to continue doing that, but we still have some space utilization issues. We still have some COVID issues that we want to keep spacing and allow these rooms that were designed for access for children and the public to use the internet and privacy, and that's what those rooms were created for. They weren't created for the cooperative extension. And on top of that, we've never even had a written lease of them. They have not paid into the county, and we have no control over what they do with those rooms either. There's no accountability. So there's still a lot of legal issues here that leave the county alone to liability. COVID, just on space utilization. We are moving into some offices in the courthouse in 2021, and hopefully, and so there might be some opportunities there, maybe trying to nail a private lease for a year. I mean, there's so many different ways to go with this. I just want to make sure the public is aware of that, that the county still pays into the program. We're still helping by statute those monies go into the program. We're not cutting that off. It's just a matter of space.
Well, and the discussion that Dr. Lyles and I had, is they, so far, they've only found one, I guess, you know, trying to find something to lease, and it was $35,000 a year, and afford it, yes, which is, you know, ridiculous. So that's where maybe he could have a conversation with us, what we can do, because what that does is that money, that $35,000, takes away from the programs.
It does, and what's unfortunate is, as much as the community wants us to support this, well, where's the community members, you know, who might be able to support a private lease out there, for them as well? I mean, it's not just the county, there's other entities in the community, between the school districts, and the city, and other public agencies that can support the program or partnership with us.
Right.
So it's not, it's not that we don't support them, it's just there's some liability issues that we are assuming, and I think the public is aware of that.
So I'll go ahead, then with that said, and we'll talk more about it at another commission meeting, that I approve the extension till the end of November.
Second?
Okay, the motion by Lori, and the second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? Item 3 is Lori Carson, Commissioner. Item A is discussion for possible action, the approval to donate two picnic tables to McGill Elementary School for the duration of the COVID-19 pandemic. Lori?
Yes, the McGill Elementary School first had contacted Bill Calderwood, and then I was contacted. What they need, and I think it's self-explanatory, they have 115 kids, and they don't have enough to space them out for their lunches at different times. So with that said, two things. One, they're only asking that it be donated through the pandemic time, but I thought it would be an appropriate thing to see if this is something that we could also purchase for them, just in case if, you know, the need is there, also that maybe we could purchase two, at least one table through the CARES, because that would certainly be qualified.
Really good, too. Would that fall under the CARE Act?
Well, are we donating to existing?
Yeah. Bill, you want it?
I got a phone call, excuse me, from the Chamber of Commerce, and they have two picnic tables. So I have a phone call in to them, and I'm waiting for a response, and I was thinking, if those tables were in good shape, we could just move those to McGill, and we wouldn't have to do anything, but I don't know the condition of the tables right now, so.
And if not, yeah, it's not like I would have to reach out to the Governor's Finance Office, but if this are tables for the purposes of social distancing during the course of the pandemic, we can go ahead and cover that under the CARE Act.
Right, and that's what Daggie had said, that she felt like it would be covered.
Yes.
And if not, we can lend them, as the agenda, we can get them a couple tables from the fairgrounds or something like that, and take it to them during the pandemic.
Scott?
Yeah, Lori, we actually have a picnic table up to our office that's pretty much just wore out, but the school district, McGill wants to take it and refurbish it, so we're gonna donate that to them also. So that's one that we're gonna give them, so, yeah.
So between you and Bill, they'll have two?
Yeah.
Okay, so are they, they're gonna have to pay for the cost, too?
Yeah, they said that we actually have a private person that's gonna take it, sand it all down, and refurbish it to give to the school, so it'll be like a brand-new picnic table for them.
So is this a moot point, or maybe just, just to have the, maybe best to go ahead and make the approval?
We should really, because we're allocating county property to the school district, even on a temporary basis.
I moved to approve to donate two picnic tables to McGill Elementary School.
Motion by Travis?
Second?
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Passionate? Page 4, item B, elected officials. Number 1, Sheriff Scott Henry. Item A is the discussion for possible action, your acceptance of the quarterly in custody death report.
Yep, just that time again, thank you, Commissioners, just that time again, to give you our quarterly death report, as reported in the report that I submitted to the Department of Deaths.
Move to approve?
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion?
They will keep them all alive, Scott.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? The next one is Nicole Baldwin, County Clerk. Discussion for possible action, the approval to hold a special county commission meeting November 16th to accept the campus. We already did this.
Yes, you did. No, please don't.
No, yeah. We already acted on this, so we're good on item A. Item B is the discussion for possible action, the approval of a request to appoint Aaron Rouge to the White Pine County Wildlife Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
There's a, you've noticed an error on the, his name on the application is actually Adam, that's attached.
Oh, it's Adam?
Oh, Adam? Apologies.
And then not only that, we have yet to receive the, what do you call it? The, the letter of resignation from Shane. Now, I know that this, this got a little confusing to me, because I see that all the other board members are being reappointed, so I guess some time had lapsed?
Yeah, I can explain what happened here. All of these seats have expired, and so Shane doesn't need to be resigned, his seat's already expired, as did the other members. They all expired at the same time. I thought that was an error, but I confirmed with Brian in the DA's office that that was the way it was intended, which is why they're all being reappointed at the same time. But I think we're gonna have to table these next two items possibly, because another candidate to fill Shane Born's spot came forward over the weekend with some letters of support, and I, oh, Bill Miller is back here, and to give him a fair chance to be considered by this board, it's probably a good idea to table these items and have him on the table.
Could we act on item C, but table item B?
You certainly could, but probably in fairness, you should do-
They're all, they're all up for reappointment, and so you can have a full list of applicants in a pool, and then choose your board.
Right, because then there'll only be one that is available. The problem with this, and I don't, is that if they, this expired in July, and there's been two meetings that they have voted on things, so we probably need to keep a closer eye on that, because I don't think the volunteers that go and sit, I know that I'm bad about it, don't always remember when they're appointed and when things expire, which unfortunately.
Actually, I believe that you would be able to repoint anybody to those seats. They're all open, because they've all expired.
Correct.
So while, by practice, you would probably repoint those that are holding the seats already.
So has there been any advertising that we normally do for this?
Are you going to advertise that?
I have planned to advertise, but it is obviously not in time.
Gotcha.
Not for this seat, but for the remaining advisory board seats. I usually do that right before the end of the year, and that hasn't-
Is this a two-year term?
This is a three-year term.
I mean, if they've all expired, if you're gonna, if we're gonna take action, we take action, if we're gonna advertise, it seems that all seats would be advertised.
Right.
Yeah, there's criteria for this, because I-
I don't know, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, that's what's, what's fair. I mean, this is the public body, and all those people serve, I mean, they serve excellent, excellent. They are very, they've been doing this for a while. However, when they're all expired, that's what the public expects, is for us to advertise it, to give an opportunity for other members to participate in government.
Yeah, there's, there's one individual that has missed the last, I believe, three meetings, and I know that that is, is, the board can remove the individual, individual through what, what is required through the CAB member, the net selection criteria.
So what we could do is we can advertise, and put this on the meeting in November, perhaps.
What about, because, why, and I'm thinking of the cost, is, because all the boards get re-advertised, I don't know when they have their next meeting, but I don't know when that is, but why wouldn't we just re-advertise all the boards at one time, and have them for this, for the December, or the January, fill out all those positions, rather than A, an advertisement, B, for one, because they're all coming up for bid, or for appointment, what, the end of this year?
Well, these are already expired, and I think that's the urgency in this, is to reappoint these members, so they, they can continue to, you know, perform business in their advisory board uninterrupted.
That's correct, so the company that take office in January, I mean, this is, they're expired, they've been expired for a few months, so now their couple weeks is not gonna hurt. This board is the one that takes the recommendations or ratifies some of their findings, and the state board listens to them, and it is what it is. They can reject those findings that need to be because of their appointment. I would suggest we just advertise, allow all those individual, interested individuals in the community to apply, and put them in for the county commission in the November meeting, and you can consider reappointment of those that are holding their seats as the new ones.
And that would be for the November 16th meeting, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that sounded good.
Wait, wait, okay.
So we'll just table the and C?
We just table this and-
So it'll be on the 28th?
No, the 16th. The November meeting. The 28th is October. So the 16th of November is our meeting in November?
I think their, their next meeting is November 2nd, but I guess that's just the way it's gonna go, in order to do right by the public.
And to advertise.
Yeah.
Okay. So help me along here, so we're gonna table these items, and have all applicants apply, it'll be advertised for appointment on the November 16th meeting in White Pine.
Yeah, exactly, so you're just gonna motion, table B and C.
Okay. Motion to table B and C.
So move-
Second.
Motion by Shane, and a second by Lori. Okay, that works. Page 4, item D.
We'll take that, vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? Okay. Item D, discussion for possible action, the approval of the request to resign Gabrielle Smith and Shadrick Michaels from the Local Emergency Planning Committee, as per the request from the board.
Yes, the board sent that request, it's in your back of the script, they're asking you to approve it, probably so they can refill those seats.
Do you bring our question on this? I'll look for a motion to accept the request to resign Gabrielle Smith and Shadrick Michaels from Leslie.
So move.
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Item E, page 5, item E, discussion for possible action, approval of the Second Amendment to the Voting System Agreement by and between Dominion Voting System Incorporated and White Pine County, Nevada, for the purchase of a high-capacity scanner in the amount of $13,075, which is paid for out of the funding of the clerk received from AB4 for the 2000, it should be 2020 election.
Yes, so I received initially $32,053, but it was increased to $42,053 to allow me to purchase this, among other things, and so the county won't have to pay for this, and I'm asking for your approval of this contract amendment to allow for the acquisition of this printer, or scanner.
Any questions? Nicole? If not all, look for a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Ian?
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate? We've got five more minutes, let's do this. Let's take a five-minute break, and when we come back, we'll come back to the 10 o'clock. Are you good at this? Do you have something to do, Brett?
Yeah, I've got plenty to do, so.
Well, then come on up, we'll stay on the department, and we'll do items 1 and C, 1 and 2, for Brett, who is here. So page 5, item 1, under Department Heads, is Brett North, Director of Emergency Management. Item A is discussion for possible action, approval of an agreement between White Pine County and the White Pine County Fire Protection District and Silver Lion Farms LLC for the establishment of a fire district, volunteer station, loggie station, to be located upon Silver Lion Farms property, near Loggie Junction.
Move to approve?
So motion by Travis, and a second by Ian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, thank you for that. Item B, is discussion for possible action, the approval of the FY 2020 Hazardous Materials Emergency Planning HMEP Mid-Cycle Grant Award from the Nevada State Emergency Response Commission, in the amount of $11,578 for the period of September 16th, 2020, through November 30th. Is that right, 2020?
Yeah.
Whether required matches you.
Brett, what is this for?
That's for fire, training conference that they hold in Reno. This year, it's all virtual, it's all online. It's substantially reduced cost, because there's no travel involved, so a lot of the volunteers are signing up, because they can do the classes through November 30th, so that's a good response so far from signing up.
Motion to go through?
Motion by Ian?
Second.
Second by Travis, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you, Brett.
I guess we'll let you go, too, Bill, if you gotta go somewhere.
I'm gonna take a little commission more.
Okay, so let's take a three or four-minute break, or five minutes, and then we're gonna come back, because Bill's gonna be here anyway, and we'll come back to our timed items, which are on page 3, it's a 10 o'clock time, so let's take a quick break, come back, five minutes or so, we'll start it, but the time guide isn't taking long. Okay. To get us this letter from Taylor Wilson, and so we can go ahead and approve that, if that's what you'd like to do. Let's go back to the item, what, I don't know what it says.
The N4 one.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I hear, an N4, it's on page 4, item C, excuse me, discussion for possible action, approval of a letter of support regarding the N4 water issue.
Yes, that, or out of the meeting in Florida this morning, they have definitely outlined what was discussed, and we'll talk about it more under the committee, but yeah, that, I support that, that letter went on yesterday.
Okay, we have a motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Ian, to support that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? So that's, we'll discuss it again during the review. So right now, we're gonna go back to our regular meeting, which was the, okay, it's on page 3, item C, it's a 10 a.m. timed item, it's a discussion for possible action, the approval for White Pine County to join the point of Zander County in a civil complaint against the state of Nevada for acting outside the scope of a special legislative session and seeking other remedies, if you can turn to Mike, okay? Mr. Hardy, Brian Hardy, are you on the line, Mr. Hardy? Is there, Brian Hardy, are you on the line? If not, we'll just turn it over to Mike.
I was really hoping he'd be here. I've not seen him, unless it's one of those phone numbers it says, I've not seen him.
It would probably be a 702 number.
John Snow is?
Yeah, he's with the Western Health Situation.
Okay.
Try to ask.
That's not him.
That's not Ian.
Okay.
Well, you wanna just kinda, you're good.
Daggie was gonna be on the phone.
Daggie, she, she texted me yesterday. She want, she would.